October 13th, Operations Committee, we are actually meeting in the Media Center at the District Office and I welcome everybody. Let me just see who we have on with us today. Mr. Strivenger, Colonel Guyer, welcome. Mr. Corbin.
Recording.
And so with the person on the iPhone, please identify. Oh, hi, Mr. Smith. Thank you. I think. And for those that are zooming in that I just said hello to, I want you to know that here at the Media Center, we have Ms. Boatwright. Mr. Rich Trishler is joining us today, myself, Molly, and Robin so far. All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first thing, as is our tradition, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Ingrid Boatwright. Do we have a second? Hearing none. I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, so that was unanimous. Does she have any public comments? Okay. Next thing on our.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, my question was, I just see the agenda. And so we were going over these things today, but at some point in time, the other things we were going to have on the agenda for a second meeting, correct?
Future.
Right, that's all going to come up under a discussion of future topics. I was going to bring up just my recommendation for a second meeting, given all the feedback we received for a second meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Molly. Sorry, guys, we just get a little bit of feedback here in the Media Center. It looks kind of loud. All right, the next thing on our agenda is to approve the September 15th, 2021 Committee Meeting Minutes.
We approved the September 15th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Ms. Ingrid Boatwright, you to accept, to approve them. Mr. Smith?
Second it.
Thank you very much. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda is OE4 Personnel Administration. Is Ms. Walton with us?
She's not on. Let me see, she's down in her office.
Here, I'll call her.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Robide. Okay, so the OE4 Personnel Administration, just for everybody's edification, it is Operational Expectation Personnel Administration. And we had a brief discussion about this at our last committee meeting. And Ms. Walton is bringing it forward again with a little bit more detail for us all today. So she is just coming on now and will be joining us in a second. While we're waiting, David, if I could ask you a question, please. Remember at one of our board meetings, we asked that the Policy Committee look at some of these OE4 OE4.8, 11, and the last paragraph. Has the Policy Committee met on that yet?
We have not met. We don't meet again until, I think, the 25th.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much.
No, but I'll make sure that's on the agenda. I'm sure Robin will too.
Yes, and it might be very helpful for clarification if Ms. Walton were to join that Policy Committee meeting for her, so she could clarify her concerns about those numbers, those items. Typically, we might go ahead and move on, but we do know that Ms. Walton is in the building and is on her way.
I thought she was coming in here and she slipped out one.
Okay, get her, Robert. So Mr. Ridding is going to get her.
Why do we want to move on to something else until she gets in?
Well, Mr. Smith, that's a very good idea. The only thing is that the next two items on the agenda are Ms. Walton's as well. And, you know, I don't know that for this brief delay that we should jump entirely out of order. Unless you all think that we should.
Mr. Corbin's on, so we, I mean, if y'all want to do the schedule, we could go ahead with our part. Oh, did you find her? I thought you were coming in.
Here we go. Sorry. That's okay. All right, Ms. Walton has joined us. Okay, so Ms. Walton, we've started the meeting and have gotten down to the OE4 Personnel Administration. So nothing like just having you on the spotlight as soon as you want.
But here's where I believe we are with the O E.
Okay.
The Operations Committee is going to take what I gave last year and come back with recommendations for people in terms of my subsections. So I'm ready to take any suggestions that you have.
All right, great. All right. So what you see on the board with you right now, on the screen with you right now, is the OE4 subsections that Ms. Walton is seeing some input as far as the interpretation. This is just for the superintendent's interpretation of these particular areas. This is not actually the submission for proof with any criteria or any proof or evidence with it. So, Mr. Smith, Ms. Boatwright, any questions you might have about what has been put forth as far as the superintendent's expectation? Or if you can, maybe you see any, and.
Do you want me to put my.
I don't want to just oversee somebody. So, Ms. Boatwright, do you have a question?
Okay, so thank you, Ms. Walton. One thing I was wondering about as I was thinking about how we would apply, you know, these to board business. So 4.1, Conduct extensive background inquiries and checks prior to hiring any paid personnel. Does that include, like, consultants, contractors? Is there a way to just get a little further clarification on that? It's basically 4.2 is volunteers, anyone who's working that's not paid. And anybody who receives a check from us would be underpaid personnel? Or, I know that's a granular level of detail.
It does, it includes that set of people. But in terms of our contractors, general contractors, you know, Robert, we have an agreement that all of their employees must have an approved background check before we issue them in the batch.
And we don't pay them anyways.
They have to provide that to us.
What about, like, consultants? Do we ever pay consultants or guest speakers or anything like that? Do we require background checks?
We do not. We do not. Usually those people are in and out. They are not active in the district. So they're in a controlled environment. They come into one area, they do what they have to do, and they leave. They're not here all 24 hours.
Okay.
Before the batch.
Okay, so maybe, like, my only feedback would be great interpretation if we're going to redo it anyways, just to clarify paid personnel, what the criteria is for paid personnel.
My question was along the same line, just thinking about, okay, as far as who has a background check. You know, what if a school were to hire an artist in residence that deals with rent to students?
Background check.
Background check required. And who does that background check? Does a school make that happen, or do they have to come through you?
They have to come through here. Usually if it's an artist resident, it is a minimal contract. It's a little small, two-day contract, and it comes to finance first. They make sure that the background check has been done, and it's with that contract. If not, it follows over to Jennifer State. And then she will either do it and charge that person or send it back to the company to be charged. But the background check must be approved before.
Got it. That's all. Just wondering if even that type of person working directly with students, you know, we have background checks. Okay, all right, that was one of my questions.
Can I take you back off of that?
Sure.
With volunteers, because I had some constituents. They went to the website, and there's a thing on that you can click on on the website to change volunteers. And they had a little bit of a kerfuffle with the link, but I think they got it resolved. But one of my questions says, so if we're going to do this for clarification, volunteers who have direct contact with students. So I went ahead and did my own background check to make sure the link was working. And I was thinking about it, I'm like, do we require if you're going to, you know, volunteer at the concession stand with a bunch of kids for the football team? Would you have to have a back, like, that's one area, I think, there could maybe be tiers where you don't need a full-on background check, if you're just volunteering to sell cookies at an elementary base, but you do technically have direct contact. And I know we pay 40 bucks a background check, so that would be expensive, I would imagine, everybody except for the school.
Usually, well, our volunteer manual distinguishes. Yes, it should be on. It distinguishes the level of volunteers.
So what level does require a background check?
That would be anyone who's going to be with students, unsupervised students or in-house students.
So I think that's a problem with the policy, and I don't know if we better go back to the policy or just kind of clarify that direct contact with students is unsupervised.
I will look at manual, because I think it's pretty clear in there, but I'll see, and if it's not, then we could have been.
We had a volunteer there.
Yes.
So I think some of that type of thing, I mean, that would be important to just maybe even reference in here, that there is a volunteer manual, which even, which delineates the difference. So that would, I think, could be some evidence, maybe, Ms. Walton, or something when you're for this. All right, Mr. Smith, have you got any questions about this? I don't want to miss out on.
Not at the moment. No, I'm just kind of, I'm just taking it all in.
Okay. All right, anything else? Ms. Boatwright?
Well, since we're, I mean, I don't want to be too, the 4.7 maintains adequate job descriptions for all staff. Do we update that periodically, or is that just kind of, is that something that we do annually to update? Or is that just, I know it helps here, we have to update it all the time.
We update it every year and on a as-needed basis.
So that could be part of our.
Yeah, it could be manager changes, a job. Just a slight tweak in a job requires job description to be updated.
Yeah, so that would be a great evidence of compliance, would be the annual update. And I'm assuming that goes, this is more of a technology, but then, like, what level of access they have, you know, part of the job description, but I'll ask about that.
So let me ask you a question. We say it could be used as evidence.
Evidence of compliance.
Evidence of compliance. So is that stating that we do that? Or is there something, some artifact you would like to see as evidence?
That's a good question.
So that was going to be one of my overarching questions, once we, you know, kind of went through. If there are any other specific questions about this, is talking a little bit about the evidence of compliance? Because the way that I see it, and the way that I've seen it in some of the other OEs, is that there are some, you know, written, not just verbal, but there is actually written data, you know, number of background checks perhaps that have been done. data, uh, you know, number of background checks perhaps that have been done, some, some form of, you know, a statement on compliance saying that we are in compliance, and the evidence of that is, is such and such, and you knowing your department, and you knowing your field, I wouldn't even begin to suggest to you what evidence you would provide to show that these have absolutely been in compliance.
Okay, I, I would have to think about that.
Yeah.
Use volunteers for an example. Last year, we looked at twenty-three thousand applications. And we look at those volunteer applications on a daily basis. It's just not something we check periodically, once every quarter, or once every week. Whenever an application comes, it comes into our office. So we scan them to make sure that they are in compliance, and that we get red flags for those that are not. So that's something that we do on a daily basis. So we are in compliance. Every day, we check every day. So an artifact for that would be.
No, I, I don't know, I think it has to be an artifact as much as a report out. We had twenty-three thousand, twenty, we had twenty-three thousand volunteers, you know, ninety-eight percent uh were, were accepted, two percent were rejected. I mean, just.
Cause that's gonna go to the work plan, right? There'll be a, somewhere on the work plan is gonna be clients with OE four point two.
Right.
And so that would just be like a one each document, saying we conducted, we had twenty-three thousand applications, we conducted ten thousand background checks, ninety-eight percent compliance. Is that doable?
Okay. Ms. Robine?
Yes, that, that's what I was gonna say. I also think, you know, like um Ms. Walton, you said there's a form that they fill out and you scan it in, you know, just a copy of the form that's um created or filled out, completed by everyone, and then just say, you know, twenty-eight thousand of these, as of this day, you, it's continual, like you said, but twenty-eight thousand of these have been processed, and you know, ninety-eight percent have, you know, met with approval. I think that's phenomenal data to have, that that many people have filled out uh forms to be volunteers, and it also shows the amount of effort that the hu- HR department has to do to, to look at those. Just my thoughts.
Uh, Ms. Robine, it is not paper, a paper system is electronic. So the application is done online by an external company, and we're just funneling in as the person that's notified, because we are the owner of that account. So it would be done.
Okay, a copy of that report, you know, that, that you get information back, right?
Individually, we do. I guess we.
Just one thing like that, just, I, I, I think that's, to me, that, that's uh interesting to me to see exactly what information we're asking them to complete.
Mr. Strivenger?
Thank you. Um, Alice, does somebody sign off um that, that those forms have been checked?
Yes.
My suggestion would be that you include that in your write-up, that, you know, somebody signs off on that. Assuring it's been done.
Thank you, Molly.
Okay, I can include that. We also have a, a system uh, uh, clearance, where we have volunteers that come back with something on their background check. And it might be ten or fifteen years old, and it's kicked back because it doesn't meet our standard. Then we have a team where people look at it that says, is this okay or not? One level might say yes, the next level up will say no. And then the final say-so comes from me or the superintendent, as to whether or not.
Okay, yeah, I think that, you know, I think that's important to include in, in the compliance. That you, you know, you do that, you have a team look at it, you have somebody sign off on it. I, I just think that would be a a helpful addition to, to your write-up.
Anybody else? So Ms. Walton, I, I think um barring any other conversation about the specifics of the wording, you, you know, what, what you and your team determine that evidence of compliance looks like, since, you know, since you know your field, um and that would be submitted with that OE uh for acceptance and, yeah, but I didn't have any other comments about, I thought this all
Yeah.
Other than the evident, the evidence and that couple of questions.
And that, some of that's just me wording. I didn't know we had a volunteer, and I think it's fantastic, we have twenty-three thousand volunteers and applications.
It is a beast.
Yeah.
Well, that's why the um efficiency study said you need seventeen people.
Absolutely.
You know, this is not OE related, but do you find out, do they apply, like, do we know if it's parents, community members, do we, do we have any categories that we track at all?
We um, we track by school. So if you want to be a volunteer at, guilty at elementary school, then that's the school you apply for. And we can pull reports, and your report goes back to that building, so that the school level people know that your report has been, or your check has been cleared. So they have access to the system for their school only, so they can pull up and see if some, some has been flagged for them. And if, if, if an individual was flagged, we, it, no, that has been flagged, and we actually send them the report, so they have up to, they, they know.
See, uh, to me, this is what's useful about this only process, is that you guys are clearly all over it, like, it's being handled, and it's just good for the board to know that, so, you know, we can respond appropriately to that.
Okay. All right, any other, anything else? All right, the next thing on the agenda is an update on the compensation analysis.
As of yesterday, we are waiting for MGT, which is a company that was selected through our process to conduct the salaries. And we wait for them to send their contract back. So we've gone through that process, and we've awarded the contract to them. So the next step will be, and it's gonna take about six months to and the next step would be for them to get their team in here to tell us what they need from us in terms of data, so that they can start work, and then we'll move forward.
Excellent.
We're on.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Well, I do, but it relates to the next one too.
Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is just to, um, when we talked about the compensation analysis, we've um learned at that time that it would not include teachers' salaries. Um, and uh, so we're bringing that forward to just have a discussion on, what about a teacher's salary analysis? Can you share with everybody? Um, you had said, I believe, Ms. Walton, I don't want to put words, because this was many months ago, maybe doing that in-house, right? Yes, if you could.
Yes. So what we've done in HR, and we, we play with this every year, because it's always kind of scaffolds, that maybe one day we'll be able to do things. So we've run at, at least four different levels of teacher salaries. So it is, salaries for teachers are started at state level. And it's followed down to us, but on a local level, we could decide what we want our base to be, and then raise from there, as long as we keep in line with the state. So we run four different scenarios. What we have to decide is the district board, or it has to decide is what do we want our base to be. Our recommendation would be nothing less than forty thousand as your beginning salary.
Great, we'll just move to forty-two.
That's right. Um, and I have in my hand here um scenario with base at forty-five thousand. And run that up to twenty-eight years, because that was a suggestion also, because we now start at twenty-four. And if we started that way, um, a doctorate degree at the twenty-eighth level would still only earn ninety-eight thousand a year after twenty-eight years of service at doctorate degree. So we might even want to go higher than that, but that is the decision that a board, that the board would have to make. You would have to decide how much, what your base is, and how much money you would put in it, and we can make any of those uh scenarios.
But you're recommending, because right now we're thirty-seven, right? How does that factor in with the, the locality supplement?
The locality supplement is not part of the set.
Okay, so when we start at thirty-seven plus five, we're really starting at forty-two.
Yes, but it doesn't contribute to our retirement. And it's not guaranteed, because in a year, it could stop.
So basically, then, you, you've pretty much done an analysis. You've already done the in-house analysis.
Yes.
So um, I thought we were going to discuss more, not the analysis, but getting one done. Um.
Yeah, it sounds, I mean, to me, that sounds great.
Exactly.
How are we gonna pay for it?
Right, and, and I, I think maybe a, maybe a little more formal recommendation uh is to, you know.
From HR, would you like, let's make a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think you can present all four scenarios that you'd run.
Yeah. So do you want to do that now, or did you want to get, do that at, you know, a different meeting?
I have all four there. I, I am, I can present what I have, but what I'd like to hear from the board is where you want to begin. What's your base? I would like for it to tell us what your base is. And then we can go back and make one of those scenarios that would be your base.
This is gonna require finance, though.
Absolutely. It's kind of part of your budget discussion.
Absolutely.
Typically, when you would talk about these things, that's a big, that is the biggest part of your budget.
Right, absolutely. Um, so what I would like to perhaps is a recommendation from HR, and um, you know, then we could discuss that recommendation. Okay, so, and what does it mean with having locality supplement? What does it mean, you know, all the, anything that might play into that? What is the true value of salary and benefits, and, you know, because I remember you send every employer, or at least every certified teacher, you know, this is how much your vacation days are worth, this is, so this is really the bottom line, this is what you, your, is worth, and that's significantly higher than what you bring home. Okay, so, you know, if you could make a recommendation, including all that stuff, we could talk about it here, it could certainly then go to the finance committee for them to have a conversation about it, so that when budget time comes around next spring, we have all the information and recommendations from finance, from yourself, everything.
I think doing a lot of work done in committee, and then having something, something tied up for the board would be good.
Sure, I can do that. Tony and I talk a lot about teacher salaries and how we can make it work. So what I can do is bring back the recommendation, and I will also bring back the top five counties, so that you know, with them, and our recommendation can work for us. And then you make a decision.
Yes. I think that'd be great, and then we would be able to have so I don't think we have that, do we, Ms. Walton?
This not.
No, okay, so that would be great, if we could have more representation, so that we could actually see the numbers and stuff, so, okay? You want to do that for November, or?
Yes.
Okay, let's add that.
This is kind of like quieter time for you, right, because you haven't, no, I was thinking April to.
It, it's, it really isn't a quiet time in HL anymore.
Right.
It used to be, it used to be a quiet time between October and right after Thanksgiving, long and decent.
Yeah.
But that doesn't happen. It starts daily.
So Ms. Walton, will your compensation study, um, the one that you are contracting out, will that be ready about budget time?
We're hoping that.
Yeah.
Sign up really clear to.
Good, so that would be.
And keep in mind, it is going to include administrative classified staff, and we also ask for recommendation for compensating certified teachers that we pull from the classroom.
Okay.
And rest of the district.
Okay, yeah. To the district, my coordinators. Okay. All right, so, Robin, did you add that to the November? Thank you very much. Okay. All right, Mr. Smith?
Um, I believe Mrs. Walton spoke to one of my points. Uh, I wonder, we're, we're going to also include um classifieds, teachers assistants, bus drivers, uh, well, I've got ambassadors, but uh, other, other uh personals as well. Is, is, was that correct? Did I have that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and also, um well, oh, oh, that's fine, okay.
Okay, right, thank you. All right, Ms. Walton, I think that's, yes, ma'am, thank you very much, greatly appreciate it. And we will plan for the November meeting to have that. All right, wonderful, all right, all right, is um, Ms. Hartlidge? She's online, okay. Hi, Ms. Hartlidge.
Hi, how are you all today? Thank you so much. Uh, this is the third quarter monitoring report, which is required under the board's policy under OE sixteen, operational expectation for FOIA. And this is the uh third quarter monitoring report, and attached to the um statement of compliance is a list that shows the number of Freedom of Information Act requests. It's actually, oh, I'm sorry, it's upside down there, but Robin, could you explain it, Rob? Thank you. It's you know, for, for, from January one to the present, but as you can see, it continues on, well, second quarter ended on June the thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one, and so our next one started on number um thirty-one, it was what started in July, and then thirty-one through, you could just scroll it down, Robin, thirty-one through forty-seven is what we've received since the last quarter. So I just want to make sure, what I'm going to try to do is make sure it comes to the operations committee, committee after the end of each quarter, and then to the board, until our next report will be due after December thirty, thirty-first, and then we'll have our annual report in January for the board.
Mr. Smith?
Um, when it comes to FOIA, who, who, who's all in, in the department, what's the, what's the, who, who's all in that, that department, and what's that process?
And would you, well, I don't think Ms. Staten is on the phone, but Ms. Jennifer Staten is the risk manager, and she keeps up with the log and making sure that, and then I'm not, she works with the communications department, because unlike most districts, all of our FOIA responses are posted on the internet, so it's really a team effort of folks working together, and then if there's issues that need to be reviewed from a legal point of view, it'll get sent to me. But it depends upon the particular request, sir. So for example, water testing records, then Jennifer will check with Rob Donning to make sure that she's got all the appropriate I mean, each department keeps certain records, so it's really a team effort to ensure that we're compliant with the law. Did I, did I answer your question, sir?
Uh, kind, kind of, I was still trying to learn uh the process of it, but um, lo and behold, if, if someone was denied uh records, who would be the person who would deny the, who would deny the record?
It just depends upon what the particular issue is. So for example, if somebody's requesting student records, it's a federal law, FERPA. We are not permitted to disclose student records to the public and post on the internet, because we'd be breaking federal law. So Jennifer's well aware of that, Ms. Booter's well aware of that. I'm well aware of that. You're well aware of that.
Uh, let me, let me restate my question. Uh, may, maybe you, maybe you didn't understand the question. My question is, if someone is denied information, or denied FOIA information, who's tasked with telling them that the information is, is denied, and that it cannot give that information? Whose job is that? Who makes the final decision on that?
It depends upon the question. So for example, Mr. Smith, as you'll see by looking at the report, there is a number in twenty-one and twenty-two, it says denied, yes, the reason why it's wrong agency, so it's not really it's the wrong agency, so of course it's denied because we don't have the information. So it's a case-by-case basis.
Well, well, see, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned, because to make sure that is fair, I think that, that someone needs to be, needs to be one person consistently uh making that decision versus uh, some people making that case by case, because I, I, that, that leaves room for um that, that leaves, I'll say that, that leaves, that leaves room for uh some, some different things that, that could possibly happen, or it, it, it appearing to be unfair. So, you know, I, I. So you know, I I I I I have a concern with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Robine?
Oh, I I actually, I'm not done, I'm not done, I'm not done, uh, chair, I'm not done.
Okay, well, we can go back to you, Mr. Smith, because um, I think we need to have, let someone else ask a question first, we can come back to you. Kathy Robine?
Well, I'm still on my first.
I was um, noticing that there were personnel records requested, and that they were provided. I was, I didn't think we released personnel records.
Pub, only the public information that would be available, not everything is is sent out.
Okay, just like, okay, thank you. I was just, when I saw that, I was a little surprised, thank.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, once again, I I'm I'm asking, uh, I'm not sure who to ask at this time with 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 this information being um, or someone saying no, I I I believe in consistency. And I'm wondering how could maybe, this this may be a question that we would ask either Rodriguez or or you know, Ms. Cartless being the legal, is 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 this, is this her department? Who does this, who does FOIA fall under? For clarification.
The the FOIA, okay, let me try to explain it again.
Can, I I I I don't think I really need to explain it, the the question.
Excuse me, okay, if I, if I may, if I may, thank you. Um, Mr. Smith, if you could succinctly ask your last question, um, you want to know if there's one person that denies FOIA, and I believe Ms. Cartledge has said that depending on the subject of the FOIA, different people have to weigh in on whether or not that is permissible. And so are you specifically asking who gets back to the FOIA request? The person that requested it, who gets back to them and says no? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Correct.
Okay, so who is the person, the one person that gets back to the person that requested the FOIA to say your, your FOIA request has been denied?
Okay, so if if you would like to, if you would like to look on the website, uh, Ms. Jen- Ms. Jennifer Staten is very thorough in preparing her responses. All of the requests in pursuant with the board's policy OE sixteen. All of them, the information that the board has directed us, which includes, as you see, the items up at the top of the page, the information. When a request is made, Ms. Staten will do an initial response. She will obtain the information that is requested. She will send responses, I review them, Ms. Bruder will review them. If there's a legal issue that needs to be researched, it will be researched, and then Ms. Staten sends out the response, and you can see all the responses on the website. It's very self-explanatory. And it's a team effort, and and I would also like to say that I commend our staff for the work that they do to provide, to not only to respond, but to post this information, because as you can see, it takes a lot of work and diligence.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Cartledge. Mr. Strivenger?
Uh, thanks, ma'am, sure. Um, I believe that if the requester uh, does not agree with the denial, there is, there is an appeal process. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, actually, um. You'll have to excuse me, I'm, I actually don't have FOIA sitting right in front of me at the moment, Mr. Strivenger, but there is actually, you know, you can actually, a lawsuit can be filed in the civil court if someone wants to protest it, that's right.
Right, yeah, I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's right. There's, there was a new statute recent years that um, says that a lawsuit can be filed, and actually, you may have seen in the news, there have been lawsuits filed about this. And now there, yeah, there have been.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that we all knew that. If there was disagreement, there was another avenue to pursue.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Strivenger. That's a really important point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Strivenger. Ms. Robine?
Sorry, I forgot. Sorry, I forgot to take my hand down.
Not a problem. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mrs. Strivenger, for uh, bringing that up. Um, but I I get what you're saying, but I'm just hoping that we can avoid that lawsuit if 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 any means uh, any means, if 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 possible, you know, I I think that would be something great, if 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 we definitely could um, avoid, avoid, avoid that. Uh, but thank you, thank you for bringing, for bringing that up as well. And thank you, Ms. Cartledge, for 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 your hard work, you and your staff that are doing, but um.
Ms. Staten, it works really hard on me, sir, she does.
Okay, so at this time, uh, we need um, a motion to accept OE sixteen point one and sixteen point two.
Let me accept OE sixteen point one, please sixteen point two.
And bring it, bring it to.
And bring it to the full board for consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Do I have a second on that?
Uh, I have a, I have a question, um, in in terms of bringing it to the full board. Are are we not putting this on the consent agenda, are we?
We should.
Uh, that is, that is our practice right now, but again, Mr. Smith, anybody can pull anything off the consent agenda uh, at the beginning of the meeting, if so desired. Okay, so will you second this motion, Mr. Smith?
Uh, no, because I don't want to go to consent agenda. I would, I would, I would, actually, I would like to um, I would like to I'd like to make a substitution, a substitution motion for this to go to the regular agenda and not the consent agenda.
Hey, do I have a second? Okay, you're done. We're back to the original motion. And um, I will second it. And then for discussion purposes, Mr. Strivenger, you have your hand up?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, just a technical issue, uh, you can't accept it, you can only recommend that the board accept it.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. So the wording of that can recommend the full board accept this, thank you. You're very good.
Days, I'm gonna get that right.
Me too, me too. Thank you, Mr. Strivenger, appreciate it. You have that, Robin?
Motion to recommend to the full board.
Acceptance.
The acceptance of OE sixteen point three.
Right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
So that's two, one, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Cartledge.
Yes, thank you all very much, too.
All right, next thing on our agenda is the construction update. Mr. Corbin?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the construction updates. In the interest of time, I will be providing highlights from the uh, numerous, numerous presentation materials that were furnished, and I will pause at the end of the construction update to take any questions before we move on to the uh, discussions related to the mid-program reset. So if Robin or Molly, you'll pull up the PowerPoint information, let's move forward to slides three and four. For updates at Beaufort Elementary, I wanted to report to uh, the operation committee that our prior concerns over the performance of the electrical subcontractor have been resolved. Uh, on the next page, you'll see some references to some OSF inspections. The fire alarm inspection was passed on October eighth. The other item I'll point out is, we do have an amendment that is being routed for signatures. It's amendment number sixteen related to fire riser pump room uh, changes. Uh, the Beaufort Jasper's uh, uh, sewer water authority has had some pressure issues. And uh, it, to resolve those concerns, we are moving forward with the amendment. Uh, it's being routed, as I said, right now for signatures, but there is long lead times associated with the materials, in particular, the pump on that project. Uh, the lead time will result in the time that it also takes to complete the work. Uh, will put us completing that fire riser pump uh, improvements by the end of March of next year. Moving along, touching base on one of our larger projects, Battery Creek High. You see some progress photos there, as well as updated financial information. The project's under budget, moving along on schedule and making really good progress. Talk a little bit about slide seven and eight for Robert Smalls International Academy. Uh, we'll see the silt fence installation and some site clearing beginning prior to the end of October. We are uh, looking to schedule a project kickoff meeting uh, to take place in November. Uh, moving ahead, I'm not gonna draw a lot of time on uh, projects that have been uh, either previously reported or still continuing on with good uh, progress with budgets and schedules, but I'll pause briefly on slide thirteen for Hilton Head Island Middle School. Uh, the designer of record, who is LS three P, is preparing. Um, slide thirteen, there you go. That is preparing the construction documents, and the team is working together to address the previously mentioned cost concerns on the project. Uh, installation of the mobile classrooms is still on schedule to take place in November, and construction for the main project likewise is still on schedule to commence in the first quarter of next year. Moving forward to slide fifteen, sharing some good news, the, the first uh, home football game was uh, played on the new turf field last Friday. Uh, there are some remaining uh, work that we just couldn't get accomplished before the first uh, football game because of the rain that we've uh, had recently. Uh, the work that remains is lettering uh, in the end zones, as well as the midfield logo, but uh, that's scheduled to take place as soon as the football season ends. Moving along to slide twenty-five, quick update on Saint Helena Elementary and that eight percent um, gymnasium renovation work. Uh, we've talked in the past about uh, needing to re- uh, look into some modifications of the plans and elevations to provide that revised uh, covered entry. Those drawings have been prepared, Robert and I have reviewed those and found those to be uh, more acceptable than the previous options that were presented. Uh, the CM, who's HG Rentals, they're uh, working on providing us a GMP price proposal for this, and soon as that's received, we'll evaluate it and be sharing additional information. Uh, but we could probably go ahead to slides thirty-six and thirty-seven. Project closeouts, I do think it's important to uh, provide an update on the project closeouts. Uh, once again, we discuss this on a weekly basis, if not sometimes daily with each of the project managers. I I do want everyone to know that we are making progress, but with these delivery models that are CM at risk, the closeout process is taking longer, and a lot of it has to do with the reconciliation of the unused construction contingencies that are contained inside the GMP, as well as any of the allowances. Uh, we we want to make sure that we're being good stewards with the public's funds, and each dollar that should be returned is returned. Um, as far as the paperwork side of the closeouts, we're we're really sitting quite well with our projects. Uh, the required paperwork has been assembled and submitted to the architect and the project manager, and both have reviewed and accepted it, so. Uh, we are making progress, and it is a top priority that we do need to be making headway with. Uh, slide thirty-eight and thirty-nine talk about our monthly financial summaries. Those are attachments that were furnished uh, along with this material. Uh, same with slide thirty-nine, that deals with our project contingency log. Uh, I just want to make a, a mention that we had no program level contingency use in the month of September. And likewise, on slide forty, uh, the amendment tracking log that we began furnishing uh, two meetings back, uh, that that has been updated and provided as well with this uh, update as an attachment. On slide forty-one, that's our cash flow projections and actual expenditures. Actual expenditures for September were approximately seven point three million. Uh, so that brings our actual spent to date uh, to seventy-nine million that you see at the bottom of the column uh, titled September twenty twenty-one. The um, uh, other thing uh, is that when you compare it back to what the previous model was forecasting, uh, that delta between actual and cumulative is spreading, but we anticipated that because of the schedule changes to significant projects such as Robert Smalls International Academy. Uh, the CBRE HEAREE team is uh, uh, proceeding with an updated cash flow model. And uh, we should be sharing that updated uh, model at the next meeting. And uh, I will touch on this, because we're gonna get into it with the mid-program reset. One of the things that Robert and I discussed is, with this format here, we do want to add a couple lines to the bottom so that that'll allow us the opportunity to uh, put in some forecasted figures for what we'll be discussing as uh, savings that we are um, anticipating to be returned, so we'll have a forecast figure and an actual figure that we can report on, and we'll also be reporting on uh, forecast use of contingency going forward through the completion of the program, as well as actual figures there. The uh, other piece that I want to touch on is our community outreach, slide forty-four. We had a really good meeting with the League of Women Voters, a forum was held on September twenty-second at May River High School. It was really well attended. Uh, attendees included Superintendent Rodriguez, several board members, district staff, uh, a couple clock members, Carlton Dallas and Ray Warco, students, and um, like I mentioned, the uh, feedback, uh, uh, the, the meeting was really a, a, a big success, and the feedback that we received from the Li- League of Women Voters was extremely positive, and this is the second uh, uh, community outreach we did with this group this year, and because it was so successful, they would like us to hold another few uh, forum in the future, but they will be looking to do that in a different part of the county so that more attendees can uh, uh, participate. The uh, community outreach at Robert Smalls International Academy on the next page. I did share a flyer with Ms. Fidrich earlier today, as well as the clock chair, Mr. Barber, uh, regarding the virtual community meeting that's scheduled for October twenty-first from six to seven PM. That flyer does have the uh, Zoom uh, meeting link information, as well as uh, the other uh, informations that's necessary to participate in that. The other uh, uh, thing on Robert Smalls is that the, the team is still working on coordinating a groundbreaking date uh, with the stakeholders. Uh, and just as soon as we can get that date and time locked in, we'll share additional information as well. And at Hilton Head Island Middle School, we are working on that meeting uh, with the Hilton Head Island Middle School SIC, so that we can go over the renovations and the additions that are planned. And answer any questions, make sure we're all on the same sheet. And then we'll go ahead and move forward with scheduling the community meeting to share information related to the Hilton Head Island Middle School project. So with that, I will pause and see what questions may be out there before we move into our next item of discussion, which is the mid-program reset.
Yes, ma'am, Rob. Um, okay, thank you, Robert, Robert. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you for getting the field ready on time, and the reviews were a hundred percent positive. Um, even though it's not quite finished, people thought it looked nice, um, and it was, it was, it was a good night. Uh, I know, though, that it was mentioned that the logo was the wrong logo. Um, is that being corrected?
Oh, yes. If I can, just, we're, we're investigating, we're looking into that, so um, we're gonna see what that cost difference was, because uh, the logo that was provided is what was approved um, at the time of the uh, shop drawing, so that goes with the approved drawings. The, the conflict comes in, in some earlier architectural rending, renderings, there was a, a larger version. So the school's requesting the larger version, we're looking into that as far as that cost difference, to see if, there's definitely a logo coming, it's, we gotta see what the difference is to see if we're gonna be able to do the.
Okay, so it's, it's not wrong, it's just smaller.
So I guess you'd say it's somewhat of a, yeah, it's not wrong. It is what was approved with the contractor for that field, so. And the difference is, um, our documents that, or the official documents are what we call shop drawings. You approve shop drawings, that's it. You you said contractor, go build it, that's where you build it. There was an earlier version of the architectural rendering that the school liked, that was like, and there was not, well, so they want that version, not the shop drawing.
And so when you say for the shop drawings, you say when, when you approved it, so who is you?
Well, it was shared with the school and everybody else. I think part of our communication is they may not have realized the weight of what shop drawings mean on how important those are. And so that was, I guess, a communication error that, so we're going to look and see if we can still satisfy that larger logo, but right now we don't know what that cost difference is. So we are looking into it, there is a logo coming, we don't know if it's going to be the larger one.
So it's not, it's not wrong, it's not a why and when it should be.
Now, the contractor did supply the wrong lettering in the end zone. That's completely on the contractor, they're going to do it as was approved and that is their fault. So, and I did want to make it distinguished that we don't know right now if we're going to be able to do the larger. We are investigating.
Robert, thank you for that clarification because my answer was more related to the correction of the lettering in the end zone. And I think you did an excellent job regarding the logo in the middle of the field.
I'll ask after a moment. Okay, Mr. Smith?
All right, so, Mr. Corbin, of all the schools that we've done, how many schools are not going to get a technology upgrade besides Hilton Head High? What other schools are not getting a technology upgrade?
I would have to go through the list, Robert, maybe you could speak to that.
I'll answer that. So of the schools not getting a technology upgrade, we would not include Hilton Head High School in that list.
Right.
Because they are getting some technology upgrade. The only schools not getting a technology upgrade are May River High School and River Ridge Academy.
Is that because they're already on the IP standard stuff? Okay, so they're still AV?
Yeah, they were just new at the time. And so that was, they were brand new and so there wasn't support for replacing their brand new equipment when we went out. So at Hilton Head High School is like Ladies Island Middle getting what I'd call a hybrid version of the technology so that they can get some new tech, some improved technology, but they're not getting the full package, yes.
Yeah, that was one of them.
But the only two not getting technology are River Ridge Academy and May River.
Okay, and then on the Ladies Island, because that was, if you don't mind my follow up here, I'm just trying to see those, okay guys? It says, so we're going to get something comparable to Ladies Island Middle School? Because what they've said here is, I think it's on a different one, but then basically the exist, okay, upon final system turn of removal of existing camera system can occur. So they're getting IP cameras?
They are, they are, they did get some IP.
That's slide 21, slide 21.
We're not going to be able to do that at Hilton Head High.
Okay.
Just because of the state of the existing network system. Network infrastructure at Hilton Head High School would not support that.
But as it relates to security cameras, Robert, I think our plan there was to add some additional ones to the current system.
Are you talking about ladies, so they're staying AV? They're, they're not going IP, well then I'm kind of staying great.
Then why does it say removal of existence?
Though at Ladies Island Middle, they are getting the new system and that's why the, after we do the final turnover that you see there, the existings are coming out. What I was mentioning was for the other project, my bad.
Difference is their existing network system was able to support more. The existing network system at Hilton Head High School is not able to support.
That's right. Sorry for the confusion.
Mr. Smith?
First, I would like to just go back to the Hilton Head Island, the, 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 I guess the mascot that was wrong, um, who is going to pay for that?
So now the lettering that was incorrect is completely the expense of the contractor. The logo size, if it's decided to go larger, that will come out of the referendum funds for athletics for Hilton Head High.
So, well, well, my, my, my problem is that, like Mrs. Fidrich asked question, you said that we, that we, or we, or they was one who made the decision. And I remember, what was your, what was your, your, your reply to her question?
Well, so they are planning to supply exactly what was approved in the shop drawings.
No, that, that's how I'm referring to, I'm, excuse me, I apologize. What I was referring to, you said that they had, that, 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 that they had came up with, came up with it and she asked you who the, who they were? Do you, Mr. Fidrich, what was, what was your question? Could you repeat your question again that you asked me to answer?
So I think Mr. Auden is, is answering it more completely. So, I mean, he's getting, he answered, go ahead, Mr. Auden, because you're, you're getting to the answer.
I think, well, the logo, the contractor supplying is what was approved.
The shop drawings.
Through the shop drawings. The, the lettering in the end zone were not the correct lettering of the approved shop drawings. So the lettering is being completely supplied by the contractor, those changes. If we are wanting to change the logo, that will have to come through district funds.
Right, but what you said when I said, well, who approved those shop drawings?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, they were approved by the school and by the project manager and everybody involved in the project.
And it's just that the school saw a different set of drawings that had a larger logo and they like that better, not, and like you said, perhaps not understanding the weight of a shop drawing.
Yep, that's correct.
So until we, the dollar value is associated with this, I think we just move on. Okay, Mr., I mean, this, thank you for bringing that up as far as the logo is concerned, but I, but I think the critical point here is what's the dollar value of the difference?
And we do not know that.
But you will know that sometime soon, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, that's, that's not my point. My point is that, you know, and these projects, I'm seeing too many times to when they're having people at the school level at different levels to make decisions on these, on, on these projects. Then my, my, my point here is why bring it to the board? Why is the board approving the costs in these projects? And, 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 and when we're, we're at, when we're back, we're modifying these projects and saying, okay, we need to spend more money here, why, why bring it to the board? First, just put a rubber stamp on it? You know, this brings me a great, this brings me concern. You know, so, so, so at some point in time, you know, this is something that we would, that we possibly maybe need to meet with the superintendent about or, 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 or someone because I, I, I don't think that we both need to be, once, once, once something leave our level, then I, I, I think that is clear what it is. And this is not, this is not the first time this has happened. I'm listening to this, this is a kind of continued thing, thing that it seems that appears to happen. And I just think that this is, it, it, it could be an easy fix, but we have, we have to put some, we have, we have to definitely put a, a, we have, we have to put some attention to it. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm not sure how my colleagues, my colleagues are concerned or not, but I, I do see some, some concern here.
Mr. Auden, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, when I said we would approve the existential additional funds or we're considering it, in no way would we ever go over the amount already approved by the board. So if that sends it over the amount, obviously it will not be approved or the school would have to make up that difference in order to pay for that. So we in no way intend to go over the amount approved by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Strivenger?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I mentioned this before and I think it, it addresses Mr. Smith's concern. And that is that scope changes should come back to the board. And, and that would resolve everything because, you know, Mr. Smith is correct and that the board approves a scope. And then since the board is actually the project sponsor, I, I think the sponsor has to approve scope changes. So I think I got head nods when I recommended that before, but, but that would, I think, take care, take care of Mr. Smith's issue. And I'm sure there's a reasonableness amount. I mean, a hundred dollars, I, I don't think the board is going to, needs to spend time on. But scope changes, and this would be a scope change, really should come back to the board, should give it's okay.
Mr. Auden, sure?
I'd be glad to bring, once we find out this number, back to the board for board approval and the board can weigh in on whether they want to approve that change. I have no problem doing it.
Mr. Smith, your hand is still up, do you have another question?
I'm, I'm kind of, well, not kind of, so I'm wondering, should we, should we make a motion for this to the full, to the full board? To bring it forward because I, I think consistency is the key here.
Mrs. Smith, of course, if you want to make a motion, please make a motion. I think that a conversation that needs to be had is the definition of a scope change.
Well, once, well, once that gets to the board, Madam Chair, I believe that all the, all, all that can, all that can be done at the board level.
So, so Mr. Smith, please motion if you so desire.
At this time, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, that we, that we, I make a motion that we send to the board for consideration a, that any, at any time a, that any time a project change comes, that, actually, what's the, what's the word on that, Mr. Strivenger, to be clear? I didn't hear you.
Sorry, the, the technical name is a scope change.
Right, yeah, yeah, so anytime there's a scope change, that it come before the board, this is simple.
Is your motion, the motion to send to the board for any consideration that any time a scope change is made, that it comes before the board?
Yes, ma'am. Within a, within a certain dollar amount or the board is updated on it. Why should just, just, I'll just leave the way this, I'll save the way this.
Okay, do we have a second? All right, seeing here I know second, the motion fails. Okay, so are there any other questions for Mr. Corbin?
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to clarify, I think what I understood from Mr. Auden's answer was that there's just some confusion as to which version of the logo. And the school might not be happy, but if it's too expensive to fix, it's too expensive. To me, it's just a matter of communication, it's not really a scope change. What I do question is just, we have nothing on our 519 at Hilton Head for any kind of technology. There's, I mean, there's not a single thing budgeted. So Ladies Island Middle has $1.2 million budgeted for technology. So I don't see how we can, and I, I hate to be complaining about it, but what I will say is that there is a high level of expectation at Hilton Head High that we're getting technology. It's on all our forms. It says existing, you know, that we're going to upgrade the camera system. It says we're going to upgrade our network. So if we're not going to do that, we need to have a very clear reason why, which I understand is, you know, that it's probably five to eight years, it'll be a new school. I don't know what currently we have in there. I am concerned as a parent that we're not going to have the, you know, the more functional cameras, but I mean, I can live with that. So how do we have the same technology that Ladies Island Middle is getting more or less when we have zero budget and they have one thing to, on the budget for the technology?
Well, so the, the main technology budget, that technology item is the technology infrastructure. So yes, you have no money in technology infrastructure.
Right.
Then it gets to what is technology, what's safety, security? Our new cameras, safety, security, new cameras, technology. So I can tell you our intent is to provide additional cameras and things of that nature at Hilton Head High School.
We don't have a safety, security budget.
We do have it here coming up when we get to the mid-program reset.
Okay, then I'll, then I'll save my question.
Okay, because I, I too would have that question, is it, it was always my understanding that
There is a safety security.
No, on the 519.
That the upgrade in safety and security has technology improvements along with it.
Well, the reference, question says that technology upgrades district life. So, I think we've created expectation, if we can't do it, we can't do it. I'm not making that argument, but I think I, we need to very clearly articulate what, what we're, we can't just say we're going to give them some cameras.
So I think there's some confusion there. You may be looking on the wrong part of the 519. So if all you're seeing is the design of the new high school, that's a standalone item. There is a safety, security budget at Hilton Head High School. So I didn't bring my, I'll have to look at that and get it for you and find that.
I'm assuming it's on the website, I'll look at, we'll, we'll get that.
Yeah, I'll be glad.
I have that with me, I'll give you, give me a second, I'll tell you what the figure is.
Yeah, there's definitely a safety, security budget improvement.
The budget, the budget at Hilton Head Island High for safety, security is a total of $1,259,919.
Where is, where are you finding that, just for future reference?
On, on the last page of the 519 report, that was distributed with our materials tonight. That was our attachment three. If you look at the back page, you'll see the listing for Hilton Head Island High, the two-digit code is 96.
I'm looking at the contingency logs.
Okay.
My bad.
Right, but it, it, it is a funded line in the referendum at that location. And those figures are based on the most recent financial report dated 9/30/2021. Yeah, there you go, go to the last page.
Yeah, I got it.
Last page.
Yeah, I've got it on my computer.
There you go. Yeah, you see where Hilton Head Island High is the second project listed on that sheet? That first line says safety, security. And it does show what the original appropriation was. There was an adjustment that allows the district to track the expenditures that went towards the radio equipment that was part of the safety, security scope. The district chose to break that out so that they could run sub reports, but the, the remaining budget is the $1,259,919 that I shared.
I apologize, I was looking at the wrong report.
No worries.
Well, that's their technology, I don't know what their safety is.
That's true, that's true. All right, Mr. Smith?
Yes. Yeah, yes, it is. Also, in reference to Beaufort Middle School, I heard you say something about the Beaufort Jasper water pressure and in an earlier slide, where, where was that at?
Beaufort Elementary.
Right, and so they're, and what were you saying about the, the pressure?
When we begin a project, we always go out and do our investigative services on the front side. And part of that was measuring available water flow as well as water pressure. And when those tests were conducted, we determined that the need for the, a fire riser booster pump was not necessary. Since that time, Beaufort Jasper Water has had some issues with providing water out to Ladies Island, as I understand it. And it has decreased the readings that we based all of our calculations off of when it was in design. And it, it will take Beaufort Jasper Water Service, I, I believe it was close to almost a year is what we were hearing to try to resolve that. And we, we, we need to move forward with installing that fire riser pump so that we have adequate flows if and when that event ever arose that we had to rely on the fire sprinkler system.
Thank you, so with that being said, is that, is that one of the reasons why the bathrooms were backing up at Beaufort Elementary School?
No, sir.
Because that is a concern that I've had, a couple of committee members have told me that, that there, that there were certain, that the bathroom systems were still, that they still had orders and they still, seemed like where they were backed up or something and I, I'm not sure why that is. But I've, I've had more than one person that I've, that have told me that, and, and, and I'm still concerned about that.
Well, I appreciate the input. I don't know, Robert, maybe has any of this surfaced through your discussions with maintenance?
Yes, no, it is more of a relationship to construction activities and having to clean up the lines. Um, they're well aware of those issues and they've been resolving them. Um, so as those occur, if they occur, they need to report that and the contractor will make sure those lines are clean, cleared so that it doesn't call, cause backup.
Okay, so, so, okay, so why, 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 I, thank you, I'm starting, um, for taking care of that, but I, I know there was, I, there had to be something going on because more, like I said, more than one person have mentioned that to me, and that's a concern, why we're working it, that is still going on, and I'm not going to make it that property, but I, I do hope that is something that we will get fixed. And, and, and then that building as well. Uh, thank you, and also, okay?
No, yes, I just agreeing. Unfortunately, that's a major problem that happens a lot in major renovation work. Stuff gets into the lines and they have to clean it out. Um, so they're, they're doing that as, as the, as any time it comes up.
Thank you. And, and also in the, in the St. Helena Gym project, you, uh, Mr. Corbett said that that there was a different, there was a different, uh, opening. Did you, did y'all already have a, a look at that, or, or how was that for the safety, security concern?
I believe, Mr. Smith, what you're referencing is that, uh, modified covered entry that was originally, uh, included in preliminary designs, but that was back when we were seeing costs that were more than double the budget. Uh, we did make a modification so that we could move forward with the award of that project, but at that time, we also mentioned that we would go back and challenge the team to come up with a, uh, an improvement to the entry to the gym. And, uh, we, we've seen a couple of attempts that the architect made, and they were not, uh, something that neither one of us felt comfortable with proceeding with. Uh, but we finally have received something that we believe, uh, is, uh, in line with what we were looking to see, but what we need to do next is, and as I said, the, the CM is providing a cost proposal for that, and as soon as we receive that, then we can evaluate it and make a recommendation for the, for that work.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that.
And once again, that work, that work is not referendum work. That is 8% capital work, just as a reminder.
Right, and also, I, I, y'all were doing any work over at the early, at the early learning center?
So as far as the referendum goes, the work at the early learning center involved, uh, the installation of a playground and the playground turf. And that work has been completed.
Okay, okay, okay. Now, I just wanted, because, uh, I, I got a call last week saying, was stating that they thought that that roof was, there, there was some roofwork done, and that there was a lot of leaking over there in the early, in the early childhood center.
Yes, yes, sir. That roof is ready to be replaced, and I think you'll see that as a recommendation in next year's 8% projects.
Thank you.
Or actually, we already have it, sorry. It's approved, and probably occur this summer.
Yeah, Robert, I saw a communication earlier this week from our roof consultant and, uh, looking at launching those, uh, uh, next round of roofing projects. Uh, once again, we're trying to get ahead of, uh, the curve wherever possible. Now, material lead times, it doesn't matter really what you're looking for, but roofing materials are falling into the category of long lead times for insulation materials, uh, as an example. So our goal is to, uh, progress those designs as quickly as possible so that we can get pricing on that. And, and then, uh, look to knock out that, uh, those roofing projects just as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Sure.
Corbin, I, I do have some concern about our project closeouts. Um, I understand, you know, your comments about that it takes time and that the summer work, it was such a short summer that was more important, you know, to get the work done and so on, but when you look at the project closeout at the yellow, um, dots, you know, some of these things were the first quarter of 2021. We are now in the last quarter, right?
Correct. We just began the fourth quarter, uh, October 1st.
Right, so, you know, we're talking a significant, at least in my mind, maybe not in the construction world, but it's a a significant number of items that are not closed out. And here we're talking about the mid-program reset, and if these items were closed out, we would know what monies we are saving or so on. I think it'd be very helpful to the discussion. I mean, what can be done about this? These yellow dots don't seem to be turning green very quickly.
The, uh, the, the slide here, the green, uh, uh, traffic lights are a representative, uh, indication that those, uh, scopes that are listed, uh, on those line items that we are going to dovetail the closeout with the other scope that's ongoing on those campuses. When we actually have a closeout, we don't put it back to green. We want to provide the, uh, clock and the operation committee and the board and the citizens with the details that, for example, May River High School there, you'll see that we're now reporting that that one was fully closed out in the third quarter of this year. Uh, same thing with the playground at Okede Elementary. Um, at River Ridge, you know, we did have a situation where the office school facilities uh, made a code interpretation and required revisions to the pump house. Uh, and those changes have been made and have been accepted and approved by OSF. So now we're moving forward with the final changes, but we do have more detail coming up so that we are forecasting when we will be looking to be able to move savings and, uh, unencumbered, unspent funds from projects, and there is some timing on that. Uh, I also mentioned that for us to, uh, you know, bring more, uh, attention to this well, in our cash flow model, we want to also include four additional lines at the bottom of that closeout, uh, or on that cash flow, uh, sheet so that it can show what we're forecasting to have returned and what will be actually returned, and then on the other side of the equation, we'll have forecasts for when projects that will be moving forward that are uh, identified, uh, needing additional funds. We'll have a forecast date and time and amount for those shown, and then we'll have an actual as well. But it is important that, uh, these get done in a more timely manner. Uh, we are holding conversations with our project managers, and we've got suggestions on how we can uh, improve on the amount of time that it's been taking to date. Um, so, uh, your point is well taken, and, uh, you know, Robert can contest that you know, we, we do address this, uh, on a weekly basis, uh, at our all-staff meeting as well as the individual project manager meetings on Thursday, so uh, we, 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 we hope to see improvements going forward, but as part of this reset, it is imperative that closeouts take place in a more timely fashion.
Right, um, I just, I wanted to, uh, bring that out and make that noted, and I'm glad that you mentioned the delta between the cumulative and the actual the spread for this time is, you know, like 38, and that's the largest spread we've had, I think, since you've shown the tracking here. So that just too is a concern, and I think you said that some of that's, you're going to have some, um, additional lines to, to help show how some of that is explained or mitigated, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, because that's, that's concerning too, that delta between those two. All right, any other, um, and board members, I will forward to you all the, um, invitation for the, um, virtual community meeting that Mr. Corbin sent so that everybody knows when that Zoom meeting is. And lastly, my last question is, the Hilton Head Island Middle School. Um, I think we've been talking for a little while about having a community meeting. Can we get a firm date?
We don't have one yet. Yes, working on getting it as soon as we have one.
I know, but I, but it just seems that we've been working on that, so what's the holdup?
Well, part of it was, we weren't, well, number one, we had to meet with the new principal. Um, we aren't quite ready to present yet, um, and then that has to line up with whatever the next, or we weren't quite ready to present. We're ready now. We just need to line up with.
And then SIC meeting?
That would be the plan.
Okay, all right, you'll let us know?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, any other questions about this part, the construction update? Mr. Corbin, thank you very much. As always, greatly appreciated. Um, and now to the program reset, mid-program reset.
Yes, one of great interest, and I wanted to start with a summary slide. Uh, real high level, and we'll get into more details and discussions as we go through this material, but the, uh, we, we've taken a close look at the, uh, uh, scope that remains and confirmed, uh, that scope and how it's aligned with the original materials that were provided to the citizens before the vote take, took place so that we could go down line by line to make sure that each and every scope that was included is being, uh, delivered to date or will be delivered as we complete the referendum. Uh, we've also gone through program savings, forecasted and actual. Uh, talk a little bit more about that coming up, but we've also gone through budget increases for the projects where we see a need for increase in the budgets. Those have been calculated, but the most important takeaway from this is that this whole analysis that we've performed indicates that the remaining referendum scope can still be completed within the original referendum total appropriations that, uh, equaled the bond referendum amount of $344,610,000. So moving on to the next slide, under the actual and forecasted savings, and we'll pull up attachment eight in just a minute. Uh, we, we went through the financial reports for projects that have been completed and specifically focused in on the remaining unspent project level funds and identified those as actual savings that we'll get into when we open up attachment eight. For projects that are nearing completion, the example there is Beaufort Elementary. When we get close to the completion, what we do is sit down with the project managers and we go through uh, all the various items that remain, and if we don't have items covered cost-wise such as the amendment that's necessary for that, uh, uh, fire booster pump that we spoke of earlier. We make sure that we put funds to the side plus a little extra so that we have conservative numbers. So that when we look at what remains, then that becomes what we are referring to as our forecasted savings. The, the other things that I'll mention in here is that each of our GMP proposals do include a five construction, a 5% construction contingency. You'll see some modeling on attachment eight for, uh, the return of some forecasted savings. The way that we approach that to arrive at our figure that we're using in our calculations of 20%. Uh, we, we didn't just look at, you know, projects such as May River, uh, High School Edition and River Ridge Academy Editions. Those ones really came out of the gate, uh, well-positioned when the market was real hungry, and we were very successful in using very little bit of that contingency. If I would have used that data, that could have skewed my results, and I don't want that to occur, so we went in and pulled seven other projects that are in the, uh, uh, a, a more representative category. And the average of those seven projects we analyzed, that those averages were closer to, um, being able to return 25% up to 30%. So to be safe and conservative in our forecasted savings, that I'll go into detail on here shortly, we're only forecasting 20%. Uh, the other thing I'll mention is that, uh, we did hold a review meeting, uh, yesterday with the Clock Financial Committee. Uh, the purpose of that meeting was to use them as a sounding board. We have been briefing them on the mid-program reset over the past couple of months and included updates last week as well. But before getting to the operation committee today, we wanted to use them as a sounding board so that they could give us some feedback to aid us with our materials that we're going to get into, uh, this afternoon. So with that, let's go ahead and move on and open up attachment A. And I'll talk a little bit more about attachment A. What, what this is, is once again, we got an executive summary here at the front. Uh, the color coding will make sense as we get into the next pages. We just wanted to make it a little easier to uh, follow the, the details on the subsequent pages, and by color coding it, hopefully you can see where these figures are coming in from, but uh, big picture on our overall, uh, program contingency for the referendum, we started off with uh, $17,781,187 figure that you see at the top. The amount that has been used to date and is also reflected in the, uh, program contingency log, we've used just over 15.6 million. So that means we've had, uh, we, we ended up with an available program contingency fund as of the end of last month uh, in the amount of $2,170,954. You'll see on the next page that we're going to be making recommendations for transfers. And, yeah, once again, the, the colors that you see on this page, the, the blue there of the 217, 0954 goes back to the first page in this next section that's in, uh, green, that's totaling $9,886,698. That once completed, will take our program contingency budget back up to a figure over 12 million. And then the other subsequent, uh, budget transfers that are forecasted in, uh, the end of Q1 2022 and Q4 2022 brings us overall at the end with the ability, uh, that's forecasting uh, the, the opportunity to return and put back into program contingency uh, uh, additional funds that will bring that total back up to a figure that's higher than what we started. And that figure is forecasted to be just over 20.4 million. So if we move on to the next page, the other thing I will share is, is we do know that there's a lot of concern out in the community, uh, regarding those projects that still remain. And when you look at the 519 report, you'll see a figure of unspent balance that remains that's uh, representative of about a third of the overall program, even though we've, uh, only progressed time-wise through roughly 50% of it. We've got majority of the work under contract through GMP amendments. So, uh, that helps. If you go to the bottom, you'll see the amount that remains that I just mentioned. It's, should be 112 million. Last page, looking in column M, the budget. There, it's the figure. 112,884,793 is the figure that remains uh, unencumbered at this time out of the total of 344,610. So if we go back to the second page of the attachment 8A. This, uh, second section there, that's the listing of recommended budget transfers uh, that are going to occur in the fourth quarter of this year. And these are projects that, uh, we've gone down line by line and feel very comfortable, uh, in recommending a transfer of these funds that total 9,886,698. And when you take that figure with the blue figure, it takes us up to an adjusted budget before the end of this year of 12,576,52. So, uh, that's a great stride in the right direction to appease any concerns out there on the availability of program contingency for those projects that remain. on the availability of program contingency for those projects that remain. When we.
Stop right there, Rob, real quick. And just everybody, if you've been participating in the clock meetings and kind of know what we've been reporting, we've been reporting the adjusted budget to go to about eight million. So the actual is considerably higher than we've been reporting to date. So this money is pretty much ready to move today. So.
Thank you, Robert, for making that point because that is, I think, important to share with everybody that, you know, we have taken a conservative approach to this. We didn't want to take things down to brass tacks. And as Robert just said, we've been conservative in our reporting to date. And as we've made progress with this first group, we're quite capable of exceeding those figures that we were previously sharing. Moving to the next section. We have additional projects that are looking to have transfers take place come the first quarter of next year. A lot of these ones that you'll see listed in here are playgrounds. The reason why the playgrounds are waiting to this quarter of next year is they're in construction right now or hadn't progressed far enough along to capitalize on those. We want to make sure that those get completed with the available funds and that we're able to return the forecasted funds as shown there. There are a couple of projects that you'll see there that, you know, on the first page, I tried to tie in what the actual budgets available in those line items were from the end of September figures, but because we've changed some the figures with the first transfer of funds that we're recommending. I wanted to provide some updates, but there are projects in there such as St. Helena Early Childhood Playground. We've encumbered all the funds, but all signs indicate that at the end of that project, we should be returning four thousand dollars down at River Ridge Academy. The the funds there are all encumbered, but once we do the final closeout and that change order that we spoke of during the closeout sections, that should free up those figures there. And then that will result in a, you know, a zero adjusted budget once we sweep those funds. So with the completion of the Q1, 2022 budget transfers, the running total for the amount of money that's going into the program level will now have increased to a figure that is over sixteen point six million. And then we do have two other transfers forecasted, the first one happening in the fourth quarter of 2022 for those items that are listed there. The the reason I highlighted the forecasted savings for the current amendments. You know, you heard me mention earlier, I just wanted to make sure that that point was understood. That, you know, we always have five percent in the GMPs to date. And we've been fortunate to be able to complete projects and be able to return unused, unspent funds. And as I mentioned earlier, the the seven projects that we used in the analysis to determine a percentage indicated twenty-five to thirty percent. And in this model, we're modeling 20% of the current amendments that have not been accounted for in any of the categories listed above to come back by the end of the fourth quarter of 2022, and that number is nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, four seventy-five. The second one that's highlighted there is for more of the purposes of just having a discussion related to the final group of projects that will roll out. We have had some discussions that we may modify the amount of the construction contingency. You know, in a perfect bond referendum, you would complete all of the work as promised and still have a dollar return returned at the end. And not require any additional funds to be used in addition to the bond referendum funds. We may want to on the later projects look at reducing that five percent to a lower figure such as like four percent. That way there, you know, we can still free up dollars, keep them available in program contingency. And then, you know, once again, the goal at the end would be to get this completed and then take it across the finish line. And with that last group that you see there in Q4, 2022, this is how we get that adjusted budget up to twenty point four million. And as I said earlier, that figure is higher than what we began with. And I think that's probably the brief that I have on the actual and forecasted savings. So I'd like to pause there. See what questions there are before we go into the next piece of the mid-program reset.
Mrs. Strivenger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to emphasize that for me, this is really important for our next referendum. It's going to be really important for because this project's being run really well. And it's important that we can go out before the next referendum and and say we came in six percent under, which is about what what twenty million would be, but six percent under what we requested. So we really were good stewards of your money. You know, that's what I want to be able to go out and say at the next referendum. And again, y'all are running this thing well, along with clock. And we need to hold on to this money if we can. So that so that, you know, we can boast a little bit before we go out for the next referendum, huge confidence builder for, I think, all the constituents, which is a tremendous selling point. So I appreciate this analysis. This is great stuff. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Strivenger. Miss Bautry, did you have?
So that twenty million is not going to spend?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, but then.
So the next topic is going to be some increase.
Right. So we're trying to come out with zero, you know, like a dollar.
You're jumping. We'll get there.
Okay, it's just Mr. Strivenger's published, excuse me.
We're not there yet.
Rich, do you want to say anything? At this point, you want to wait? I'm not put you on the spot.
Yeah, I want to wait now.
Okay.
I'm enjoying what I'm seeing.
Yeah, okay. All right. Mr. Strivenger, do you want to say something else as well?
Yes, ma'am. I was just gonna say if if we come out at zero, then my whole argument that I just went through is 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 nullified. Because then use the whole three forty-five and then that that's not something, you know, that we can go out and boast about. So we don't want to use all the contingency. We want to save as much. And I know you know what I'm talking about, Rob.
Both of them. I do fully.
Okay.
Yeah, I would absolutely confirm that. I feel that this project is being run very well, very transparently. I do appreciate, and I've mentioned before, Clock's involvement and their input. And I agree with David that if we were able to go back to the to the voters and say, look how well this was managed and what some savings are. It would make the next one much easier because Mr. Earl Campbell and I have been visiting schools and there's great need. Just that there is great, great need. So. Anyway, okay, I don't see anybody else to stand up. So. Part two.
Yeah, yes, let's go to part two. And Robin, if you could start with slide forty-nine from the PowerPoint. Share some information from that before we go into attachment eight B.
Actually, since we had kind of before you start, Rob, and I don't know if you're going to talk, you're going to talk a little bit. I just would like to acknowledge or one of the things that has caused all this is because of the pandemic. We would not normally do a mid-program reset like this. And we were in comfortable situation, but due to the pandemic and the cost increases and supply chain, that's why we are having to do this. So I just want to preface that before you begin, Rob.
Yeah, thank you, Robert, because I think both Robert and myself had some inclinations, I guess, that we were still okay, but we wanted more than that. And by doing this deep dive, and this was a deep dive. I mean, Robert can tell you all the all the staff hours that have been put in to get to this point. It's it was a it was a pretty significant lift, but it was a lift that needed to be done. Because we needed to know what we were facing. And the good news, as I mentioned at the beginning, is is that the analysis has been completed and it's very positive. So with that, let me dive into the information regarding the project budget increases. The one thing that I want to make really clear is is that as we take the funds that we just went over that are actually forecasted savings. Those will all be going into program contingencies. So you'll see entries on the contingency log showing the plus ups and where they came from. So you can follow the dollars really transparently. But vice versa, any use to cover any project that needs an increase will likely be tracked and entered into that log. And the reason that we're not moving savings from projects to other projects is that that's just not an efficient way to approach it. We've got, you know, forecasted figures, budgeted figures. The actual figures, they won't match up dollar for dollar. Some will be high, some will be low, but by putting them all into program contingency, just the dollars that need to be used to deliver on the approved scope will be used. The rest will stay there. And at the end, goal is to have funds that remain, and I'll be quite pleased to return to the board at that future date and time to hold conversations with the board about how much money remains. And then the board can have discussions on how they want to use those remaining funds. The this information was also shared with the Clock Financial Committee yesterday, once again, as a sounding board. And with that, let's go ahead and sort of dive into attachment eight B. Thank you for bringing that up to scale. So what we did here was an executive summary. If we look at the schedule and timing and which projects and the projects are listed on the backup that are going to see a need for budget increases, the total through the end of the fourth quarter of this year represents two million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And if you remember from attachment eight A, that figure was in blue of what we have available right now. It's two million, one hundred and seventy thousand, nine fifty-four. That's why we wanted to move forward in the fourth quarter of this year with transferring funds that brings that figure up to twelve million, fifty-seven, six fifty-two. So that's going to cover not only the increases that we're forecasting needed before the end of this year, but also the forecasted increases through the first quarter of next year. Second quarter budget increases are forecasted to be just over two point seven. That takes us back up to a figure that's totaling thirteen million, two hundred and seventeen thousand. So once again, timing back with the information shown on attachment eight A by that period of time when we sweep the Q1, 2022 budget transfers that are forecasted, we'll have sixteen million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand. So we can cover the figure in Q2. And then in Q4, we're going to be taking figures back up to the total that we shared that's twenty point four million. So that gets us what we need for the fourth quarter as well as the first quarter of 2023. The difference between these figures, you see bottom line budget increases total sixteen point four. And our forecasted funds that are going to go back into contingency are twenty point four. So that's that four million that Mr. Strivenger mentioned earlier. So with that, let's go to the second page and go through that level of detail there. In the fourth quarter, those are the projects that we will be seeing come forward. And the projects, available budgets, if there are any budgets, I have included that information as well as the forecasted budget increase as well as what the adjusted budget would be after GMP proposals and amendments are prepared. And as I said, that that's the figure there from that top section that fed the summary page at two million, eight ninety. When we go down to the first quarter of 2022, there's the list of the projects there in detail. And those projects will need just over seven point six million is what's been forecasted. And in the second quarter of next year, we've got those four scopes needing additional funds that total two point seven million and change in the fourth quarter of 2022. Those five projects that are listed there are forecasted to have budget increases of two point eight million. The last one, I highlighted that because I think it's important to dialogue on briefly. The IT, the technology infrastructure improvements out at Buford High that was put under contract. The plan was to utilize an existing conduit pathway from the main campus down the road into the stadium. When we began to look at using that, we found that large sections had been crushed and other sections are flooded. So that's not possible anymore. And because of the length of that and the cost, which we think that will probably be in the rough order of cost magnitude of four hundred thousand dollars. We thought, let's just pause, put that towards the tail end. Let's make sure all of our figures are aligning as we anticipate. And then look to execute that remaining piece for the IT extension out to the stadium. So with that, that's the forecasted increases. I will share that for the forecasted increases, we did involve our CBRE here, cost estimators. We also utilized local cost data from various GMP proposals we've received to date with that cost model that we did, we did forecast the budget increases that you've seen. We've also been fortunate and been able to back test our model. The we've had multiple change proposals come in for a handful of projects. The total of those amendments were in the magnitude of roughly one point six million dollars. And our model had indicated those costs to be roughly one point six, three million. So really pleased with the accuracy of how the model is currently performing. And anticipate to be able to see similar positive performance as we move forward. Once again, you know, I took the approach to be conservative so that we have set this up for success. It's much easier to under promise and then over deliver. And that that's how we've approached this. So with that, so let's pause and see what questions may be out there related to these budget increases that I just covered.
Miss Bautry, thank you. So if I'm reading this correctly, excuse me, Hilton Head Island Middle School, you said there was a four million dollar cost overage, and then you were doing value engineering. And it looks like you came up with five hundred, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars in additional costs, which means that somehow you cut roughly three point five million off the original plans. Is that right?
Well, if I can just, I said, we're not done with that exercise yet. So these are some budget estimates. It's not hard yet. So we have to wait until they finish the that cost estimating exercise to see what we are. So this is our our goal is to get to that five twenty-eight that kind of cost estimators looked at and thought that's a reasonable amount. and thought that's a reasonable amount. Um, but we're not sure yet because we're not there.
So I guess my question then as a follow-up, if you don't mind, would be if you do end up cutting somewhere in the order of 3.5 million, will we know what those cuts were? Will there be a sort of before and after picture?
Um, not until we, well, uh, they keep an evaluation doing log on that, Rob. Do you know the answer to that at Hilton Head Middle School?
I know that those items that are being priced are put into a log so that we can evaluate those uh, figures, Robert, and they either accept or recommend not to accept those items. So yeah, but the approach is very similar to what was seen for Battery Creek High School and Robert Smalls International Academy earlier this year. So I would anticipate being able to produce similar.
Did Battery Creek have cost overage?
Yes.
Cause we didn't approve any additional funding that I could find.
We did not, but we had to value engineer that from where we were originally to get it within budget. Now, one of the things, you know, the difference is Battery Creek, um, we got just before all the big cost increase. We are timing with well at Battery Creek. We got it done just for all the big cost increases came. Um, Robert Smalls came after that. Uh, some of those massive increases in steel that we saw, that's why we had to go into that uh, for Robert Smalls. One of the things I'd like to just kind of add is that this is kind of a roadmap. And as Rob said, we're expecting some of these numbers to be high, some of these numbers to be low. We're going to manage that and kind of watch and see that as a conglomerate, we're heading in the right direction. Um, but like he said earlier, not one of these would be exactly right as far as with the increase, but we should watch it and make sure we're staying within the same ballpark. And I just like, you know, notices that we, we're savings is 20 million, our, our increases are 16. So there is that cushion of a 4 million contingency. Now, if we're seeing numbers come and we've done some things conservative, like Rob talked about on our forecasted savings, they did 20% and they modeled 25. We're used to seeing on somewhere, getting back about 30%. That just shows you that's a conservative number. And if we're starting to see funds come back in excess, there's going to have to be a decision on how, you know, what the purpose of those are, but that cushion is there in case there, something does pop up along the way um, that we need to use that. So that could happen.
And then what's the timeline on when you think you'll have a final hard number on that middle?
Well, if you notice on here, they're saying quarter one, 2022.
Correct, because it's on schedule to start construction in that quarter. So we'll have those figures in that timeframe and we can hold the discussions at the operation committee and the clock as well as the full board and uh, share that level of detail. And the GMP amendment for that will be of such a figure that it will require board action for approval. So that, that, that will be brought to the board and discussed. And uh, any additional use of contingency uh, can be included in those discussions.
Well, since Robert Smalls is kind of another project that came after the price increase, are we going to have a similar process where you're going to bring us auctions type of thing? Or do you think?
Potentially, I don't, I see, I don't know where we're landing right now in that middle. They're, they're in the middle of the exercise and we don't have a final number yet. So I mean, we're making a best guess right now, but to be honest, I, I, till we get that final number, I really don't know what it is.
Correct.
So I think what I'm hearing you say though, is that just the transparency of what it was and what it is not going to be. And what is that difference in between? And it might be something that is not as noticeable or something not major, but it's just, I, I mean, because you've, you've raised this point and as well you should. You know, the community is expecting something, but they don't really know what it is yet. And now they're hearing that something's being taken away.
Well, and I will say, I feel like we've been talking about this for two months. And it's just, right, as a, as a board member from Hilton Head, I feel the pressure building on people wanting to know. Right. And we still are playing with numbers. So, and we're supposed to start Q1 2022. So hopefully if we have to go to the board, I mean, we're already in October. So anyways, but I have definitely raised this point before.
Yeah.
We're hearing it. We're, we're definitely hearing it. Um, uh, yes, but we want to over promise and you know, we don't want to put something out there that's not achievable at the same time.
Mr. Smith?
Oh yeah, I thought you forgot about me. Um, um, well, that being said, um, I want to go back to uh, something that Mrs. Morey brought about Barbara beginning when she first started a long time ago, um, a few minutes ago, she said that she asked Mr. Corbett. I believe that when, when they X out certain things in the project, whether they give us an update on what they, what they, what they Xed out versus what they did not. And, and my, my question would be, um, could, uh, I think would be reasonable to, well, we need to make that a motion for, for him to, for them to give us an update on basically what they're keeping and or what their projects could possibly look at or what they Xed out, just so that we can see it for ourselves as well.
Well, yes, sir. I mean, we'll come to you with an amendment to approve that GMP. So you'll, you'll know at that time, we'll be ready to present that to the board. And you know, we're, we're setting, you know, uh, for our, our goal, and we're showing through this plan that we believe we can add, you know, a little over a half million dollars and, and still everything worked out in the issue. You could tell us at that time, no, we don't want more than what the original budget was. And you need to get it back to, uh, you know, don't add anymore. Or you can say, there's some other things we want, kind of like we did at Robert Smalls, and you need to add 2 million more, not half a million. That, that's going to all come at that discussion uh, when we talk about approval of the GMP. And we're just not ready yet for that conversation.
Yeah, but I think that you're speaking of something else, Robert. That's not what I was referring to. I was referring to when she asked, um, when she asked Mr. Corbett about uh, what all they would possibly avenues that they might take or something they may exit out and something they may want or they may not want or something they have looked at, that they decided not to go with. And those are, are, are questions that, you know, I too would like to know. I just like to see, you know, uh, and that's how you learn, learn the work of people and understand and how, how you, you build our, our trust relationship as well. As in to see, you know, I look at, we know they have good, good, uh, good points and you know, not to say that, that you may question that. But I, I think that seeing and seeing is, is everything, you know, along, along the uh, when the millen- the millennium now of transparency. And I think there's a scene, the decision that you've guys, you've guys have or, or have made or are making I, I, I have to, to keep us, to keep us engaged, I think is, is, is a much more successful process. Well, I believe so, Ms. Ball, uh, is, uh, was she asked, was that not correct, Ms. Ball, right?
Well, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Smith, but I would say I do have a lot of trust in Robert and Rob. Um, and I feel like so far, every time I've asked for something, including, you know, you and I asked for that amendment. I have found that to be tremendously useful and transparent. So I'm comfortable with them just presenting and allowing us to ask questions.
Okay.
I will share one of those things. I remember, or correct, earlier, Mrs. Uh, early in your earlier comments, you asked him if he would, they would bring up the, 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 let you see the projects that, or let you see the pictures of things that they, that they have have, have Xed out instead of they're not going to bring or that they're, they're making decisions on, you've asked to see them. So I find it a little, I, I'm not sure where to go, what to go, I find it a little concerning that uh, that you said, that that's what you said then, and then now you're saying something else. And, and that, and that's the point that I'm bringing out that, uh, that if you ask them for it, then well, what's the problem in the transparency of just showing it and saying, this is, well, we looked in this project, we looked at this entrance or we looked at this. And we, we decided to go with A and B, we went with C because we thought it was more feasible. And I thought, and it was my understanding is that, is that what you were asking for earlier? And I'm saying, I don't have a problem. I don't, I didn't see a problem with that. And also that also bought transparency and with, with, with knowing the board members, also community members as well. That's, that's my message. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think Mr. Corbin wanted to say something.
I was just going to add real briefly that now as we go through this, we do this on every project uh, as it begins to make progress. And we identified this concern back at the design development document phase. So that's early on. The items that we're exploring are not deviating away from the approved scope. What it is, is we're applying lessons learned and making uh, choices based on the team's input. And a good example is what we discovered on uh, our earlier projects at Battery Creek and Robert Smalls. Now, the, 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 the specifications required uh, the fire alarm cabling to be installed in conduit. That was not a code requirement. And we've got uh, pathways up there such as cable trays that it can be installed in. They're above the ceiling. Nobody's going to see the difference, but it resulted in some significant cost reductions. That's just an example of some of the items that we're looking at. But you know, it also ties into, you know, why we have been cautious with scheduling this outreach community meeting for the stakeholders at Hilton Head Island Middle School. We do not want to go forward and show renderings that may have, you know, a, uh, an entry or a facade that, yeah, we end up having to uh, do a cost reduction value engineering exercise on. Uh, it's the, 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 the facility will still look quite uh, good and impressive and with great quality. It's just that we want to make sure that those type of cost trade offs get explored. And I don't see a reason why we can't put together a list of what those items were. And uh, we can uh, indicate if we've recommended to accept those to move the project forward. Or you know, sometimes when we just don't get a good uh, price back, it, it, we, 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 we move on and look for other items. But you know, that's sort of the process that we apply to each project. It's just standard practice. Uh, but I do think that being open and transparent as we move forward with Hilton Head Island Middle School would be very advantageous.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. You're spot on.
Colonel Guyer? Dan, you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In 2019, when we came up with the $344 million referendum and we itemized everything on it, we put a $20 million contingency, 20 plus million dollar contingency program. Plus we had contingencies in each of the different projects. I remind you that in 2019, we didn't know what COVID meant. Had we had 2024 sight, we would have probably had a much greater uh, contingency put in there. And so we could bring back something to the taxpayers at the end of uh, our four-year construction as a result of the successful referendum. To come in at, at the end of this construction project and to stay within $344 million, given the inflation, given the schedule uh, changes. And every time you have a schedule be uh, expanded because of loss of material not coming, your costs go up because you got people standing around with nothing to build. Everybody in this community knows that anybody that's buying a house right now and having a house built, their costs are going up. Our voters are going to understand, in fact, well, I think will be shocked that we can come in at the end of this project at $344 million. I hope that the very conservative estimates that has been made here to come in under that budget occur. But I don't know what's going to happen. Neither, neither does anybody else in the next 18 months. I believe that our commitment to the taxpayers is we are going to build everything we said we're going to build. And right now I think we could do it within the $344 million. But if something happens in the next 18 to 24 months, we still got to build it. And if we have to subsidize that with some 8% money to do that, we have to do that. I hope we don't have to. But we have to go back and say, before we can have another referendum, we've, we've got to, we've got to build it. Or we were not going to get a next referendum passed. So uh, I am optimistic and I believe the clock finance folks were briefed yesterday. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
And what was their, what was their solution or what was their conclusion from your briefing?
Um, our conclusion, um, I haven't spoken with other members of the clock, but I was personally impressed with what uh, we said. Um, goals were presented to us by the district, um, things that they expect to meet. Um, and it's nice to see that they were put out there. Um, and that is what they're striving for, to make sure that everything that has been promised uh, citizens of Beaufort County is going to be met. Um, as you said, we're still in a very precarious time. Uh, this whole program could, could have blown up if it had not been for the work that the operations department and the district as a whole had done. Uh, and then working with the school board. The hours they've previously spent and the hours that are going to increase down the line as they move forward, starting to get these financial documents to bring money back. It, it's going to be a lot of work, but it's, they said they're going to do it. Uh, the goal is to bring that money back and to keep pushing on with one thing I know that Carlton on our finance committee says, we cannot fail. And that is the district, that's the school board, that's the clock. Everybody's sitting there looking over everything, um, cheering operations on. Uh, but keep moving forward and make sure that we can move on to the next step. And that's going to be after this uh, referendum, after our four years are up. And here we are and move forward with the next program.
Colonel Guyer, did you want to say anything else? No? Okay.
And I agree with everything that's been said. Um, I have been very complimentary of operations staff throughout and I have a high degree of trust in them. Failure is perception though, is a, is a question of perception. My concern, the reason I'm hammering on Hilton Head is because, and I looked at the right numbers this time. We have 1.2 million dollars and change. I know this will drive the accountants nuts, but right around 1.2 million dollars set aside for safety, security and technology at Hilton Head High. Beaufort High, which is a comparable facility, had $5 million set aside. Ladies Island Middle School, which is also going to be renovated, has $2.5 million set aside. So we have 25%. I'm not arguing that point per se, but I want to know what we get for 1.2 million dollars. Because I can tell you the expectations and I think the amount of money we set aside for that program and the expectations that people have in the community for what's going to happen there are not matching up right now. And there's a way to do this where there's not a perception of failure. But if we just walk in, and this is not a criticism of anybody, and just say, oh, we're just going to add, because right now we've got the radios, they were $118,000 that everyone had. They don't work from one end of the building to the other. So if we walk in and we have radios that don't work and we just add a couple of AV cameras and we throw up some, you know, bulletproof glass in a court, they won't feel like we have succeeded, even if technically we have. So my point is, I just feel like I'm here representing the expectations of my constituents. And I'm saying in a somewhat cautious tone, we need to make sure that we leave them feeling that it was a success. And I'm not sure what we're going to do with 1.2 million dollars.
Got to address at least the radio, the BDAs have not been installed yet in ICLIA. So they're not supposed, well, they will not work to their full function until that word has been completed.
And that's the kind of thing. So we're going to have BDAs hit the radios, we're going to add this, we're going to add that. 1.2 million dollars, 25% of Beaufort High's budget is not a huge budget for that stuff. So just tell us, tell us, me, the board, what we're going to get for that, so we can manage expectations. I think would be my comment to all that, to all that said. But it's not a criticism. It's a trying to prevent having a perception of failure.
Anybody else?
Uh, yes, um, I, I do hear what you're saying. Um, but you know, I, I just want to make sure that in the midst of us uh, going through and getting what some of these schools are getting, also that we looked at, we look at when the last time had you had to have some of these other schools been upgraded, that upgraded as well. And, and I, and I do believe in being fair and sensitive, sensitive. And and I and I do believe in being, uh, fair and sensitive, sensitive to all the students' needs in Beaufort County School District. Um, however, I I just want to make sure that with that, a- and your efforts that we're not sure about by pointing out what's going on on one side and the other side that. We're not shortening and that we're not shortening one to make sure that the other one have. So I, you know, you know, I I just, I'm just cautious and cognizant of. What you're pointing out right now a- a- and also the mitigation strategy to. Remedy that to rem- to the remnants of that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, Mr. Corbin, Mr. Otting, um. It's obvious the level of work that was put into this mid-program reset. Um, I did not realize it was not industry standard to do so. Is is that what I heard? That this is not something, but.
I think Rob said he's never done this previously on one of his jobs that.
That's correct. You know, in in my thirty year tenure working with CBRE here, I've never done one. But I was made aware of one that we did for another district. So it it isn't unheard of, but it's not typical.
Well, I think by doing this, especially given the, uh, climate in which we find ourselves with all these different concerns that Dick mentioned. As well, you know, labor shortages and all the the cost increases. I think by doing this, it has certainly, um. Uh, lent a level of of trust. It's definitely, um, made me feel better. That we will be able to continue with the projects as promised to the community. With the clocks, uh, looking it over and their opinion of it. And I attended the clock meeting this this month. Um, the word was that they felt that that this was a good reset, that it was a good analysis of where we are, where we're going. Um, and feel pretty confident with it. I think you also heard a few things tonight of the concerns. Um, and I know that you take those very seriously and, um. It's important to to address those as well. So thank you so much for the level of this and, um. For all that it it obviously took hours and hours to get down to this detail level. Whoever did the color coding suggestion, thank you. That was a fabulous suggestion. It helps it track it back and forth better. Um, so great. I I think that it would be appropriate to have a, uh, motion. To, um, recommend to the board that they would, uh, that the operations committee recommends.
Think, uh, well, there's a couple ways. I, my thought was if you're, you could either recommend support or, um. If the committee wants to support the direction we're going, that that would give us some backing and go ahead.
That's what I, that's what I was hoping, I mean, thinking is that it would be, we need to come out of this because you're going to present this to the full board. And need to come out of this with whether it was a thumbs up or a thumbs down from the committee. So, um, Ingrid, I was just saying that I think it would be helpful, uh, to come up with a motion to, uh. Of how, what the committee wants to do with this information and how we feel about it. And Robert threw in the suggestion of maybe a motion of support. Excellent. Would you or Mr. Smith like to make a motion?
Let's see, how we phrase this. I knew that the operations committee supports, recommends to the board. To support of, uh, the mid-program reset as presented.
Motion that the operations committee recommends to the whole, to the board, support?
Uh, their support. Yeah, their support for, uh, the mid-program reset.
Right.
As presented. I am not going to pick you on my feet. Like, I don't like to prepare, probably, because I just started.
It's support, yeah. Mr. Smith, would you be willing to second that?
Uh, not this time. I, uh, I'm I'm a little, I have a little bit of emotions.
All right, well, I will, I will second that. I think that this is, um, this is, this is excellent. It will lend a lot of credence and transparency and feelings of confidence that we will get to the finish line. So I will second it. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
I believe I'm for the vote. I thought if you seconded it, then you passed the gavel. That's what I thought, but maybe not.
No, I think, Mr. Smith, I think we're good with this. Can, are you going to vote yea or nay?
Um, Madam, uh, Madam Chair, I thought if you seconded the motion, once again, into Robert Rose's vote, I thought you passed the gavel is by, is my question. That that's what, that's what I just said.
Mr. Smith, you know what? I'm not going to belabor this. I don't have it in front of me. It's almost seven o'clock. I will pass the gavel. So I pass the gavel to you, Mr. Smith, Vice Chair. I'm seconding this motion. Okay, you've got it.
Thank you, Al. Uh, 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 are we going to call for the mo- call for the motion? Uh, uh, is, uh, can we take the votes for the yea? Uh, for the nay? And I will abstain. Thank you. You can have the gavel back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So the last thing on, um, so, Mr. Corbin, again, thank you very, very much. Thank you very, very much. Please express it to your teams, to your staff. Um, very much appreciated.
I'll do that. Thank you for the kind words.
All right, the last thing on the agenda is a discussion of, uh, future topics. I sent out an email earlier with some, um, a list, enumeration of the topics that was sent to me. For today's meeting and you all can see what today's meeting would have looked like if we had added. Uh, that other list of of items. So I'm suggesting that we, um, have another meeting very soon. And let's can, let's start our future topics for November. So any suggestions?
Well, we're going to talk about the procurement code at some point. We're looking at the minority owned businesses.
Were we or was finance?
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, okay. I would like to, um, for a future topic, look at, um, the work order process. Process of how work orders are.
Maintenance work orders?
For the November meeting.
No, just future topic. It doesn't have to be November. Okay. All right, Mr. Smith, what was your recommendation for a future topic?
Uh, the use of facilities.
Let's add that one for future topics. Okay, and you have anything else?
The easement of WK Os.
Yes, thank you. Is there a timeframe on that one?
Yes, it needs to kick, yes. We've got some new information from what our last discussion and the county is kind of. Waiting on a response, but I wanted to bring it to the board before.
Okay.
We gave the county information, so.
All right, so let's start with that. All right, um.
Was the use, the, uh, work order process?
Maintenance work order process. All right, the next thing we have to do is determine a date. I I recommend that we have a second meeting in October. Because we have OE six, a, um, SS forty six and forty seven, OE fifteen, AR E seven. AR SS thirty six and OE eight point one. So.
The twenty seventh of October is. Of that week. It depends on how you start early. On the twenty fifth, we have two meetings scheduled. One is at three thirty. And one will be at five. On the twenty sixth, we have North of the Broad Committee meeting at four. Twenty seventh, there is nothing scheduled. Twenty eighth is ad hoc left in at five. And then nothing on the twenty ninth.
Can we do it before the board meeting, maybe on the nineteenth?
And that's.
That's on Hilton Head and that's too much work for us to be prepared if we were to do that.
Yeah, all right, um, what other time would be good? Mr. Smith, do you have a suggestion?
Maybe the, uh.
You have the eighteenth available if you want to do it.
Do you think everybody was ready?
What about the twenty fifth?
The twenty fifth, we already have two meetings scheduled on the twenty fifth.
The twenty seventh, I am out of town. I would be willing to call in.
Unless you want to do it earlier on the twenty sixth.
I mean, I can do it. We can do a, uh.
Because it's a four o'clock meeting on the twenty sixth. So if you wanted to go earlier, then you could.
Can you do the twenty sixth, Mr. Smith?
Um, the twenty sixth, uh, at about what time, what time, Madam Chair? What'd you think?
Uh, we, we have an ad hoc North of the Broad Committee meeting at four, so, um. You know.
What you all have is, that looks like a two hour meeting. For that second meeting, that's a two hour meeting that you have.
So we could do a two o'clock, a two o'clock meeting on the twenty sixth?
We need to do it earlier so that we have time to switch over for the four o'clock. We need to have, we need a good.
Yeah, about one o'clock, one o'clock on the twenty sixth. Can you do that?
Is it on the twenty sixth, uh, not twenty seventh?
Right, the Tuesday, the twenty sixth at one o'clock.
Uh, okay. Yeah, 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 I will, I will compromise then.
We have consensus, Tuesday, the twenty sixth at one o'clock. For a special called second meeting in October for the listed items there. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, also, um. Uh, is Mrs., is Mrs. Cushingberry, uh, uh, done? Because also, uh, on that meeting. Uh, did we add the, um, the facilities, uh, the facilities, uh, the, uh, the facilities, um, the use of facilities?
We can add that for the November meeting. Okay, would we add that for the November meeting? That would be great. Thank you for my.
Yeah, there's no way we can add that on the, um, on the October meeting?
Well, take a look at the screen. You can, um.
Six, I have six items on there already.
Well, you can take off only six, right? We just did the FOIA. That got moved to today. So that the other two ARs.
That shouldn't take long because that's a continuation.
Right, ARs, uh, OE eight.
What do you mean? It was due in September.
No, 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 I mean, time wise, time wise, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, calendar wise, it was supposed to be done in September.
How long will it take?
That's something that takes like fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it's up to you. Yeah, I mean, I can do it in fifteen minutes.
Um, Mr. Smith, yeah, since you, you know, it sounds like you would like to have that sooner than later, then let's go ahead and add that.
So what are we adding?
Use of facilities, is that, is that what you are asking for?
Uh, ye- yes, ma'am.
Is there an AR associated with that or a policy?
I believe he wants a general discussion. Is there a specific point you want to raise or is it just a general discussion about?
Uh, uh, the general discussion and al- also the ARs that 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 tied to, so we get a clear, I mean, the process of that.
Ooh, well, I mean, an AR report on, I was not ready to do the use of facility report.
So are you asking for a use of facilities report or a conversation about the AR?
Well, yeah, we can, well, we can have a conversation about about the, uh, AR.
Okay, all right. Right.
We'll just do a brief summation of the AR and then there can be a conversation about any items that the board may be.
Okay, so a discussion of the use of facilities, right?
Yes.
Versus an actual report from Ops. Okay. All right, anything else?
No, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Greatly appreciate it.